Make an order, please join us in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, my buddy, tonight. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from January the 3rd and January the 10th. So are there any corrections or changes on those minutes? None, if not, they're approved and submitted. Next item, reported by town manager, Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mayor Black, members of council. I'm pleased to report tonight that the Chamber of Commerce has indicated that they have agreed to resolve the matter related to the property under the terms we presented. And I'll work through Mr. Lockaby to get all the i's dotted and t's crossed on that process, but thought you would be interested in that bit of welcome news. Also wanted to advise that in response to the issues raised at the last council meeting, the police department has invested several hundred hours of manpower in investigating and monitoring the farmer's market. And so far, we don't, we have not identified any significant problems or issues, but want to make you aware that we have been responsive to the concerns that were expressed. And on an administrative note, you have before you a draft of a resolution that VDOT has requested we adopt designating the bridge over 460 along Burks Hill Road as the Purple Heart Memorial Bridge. I know we did that in July of last year, but we didn't do it the way VDOT wants us to. So I would ask for you to consider doing that tonight as an addition to the agenda. And that concludes my report.
All right, any questions, comments from Mr. Warner?
Just follow up on the farmer's market. I got a real nice letter from her a few days later thanking the police department for being there the next day. And she did say it does seem to have improved and basically been taken care of, but I'll send that to you. She thanked the police department and for what we have done.
I received the same from Mr. Rowlett, too, when I reached out. Very happy with what had happened and appreciate it.
I've received one from Ms. Penning, too, and that she wanted to thank the police department and all they do for them, getting stuff straight.
All right, any other questions? No, okay. Next, we've got appearances before council. Anybody wish to speak before council tonight? Mr. Parker signed up, but I asked him to speak when we get to the item on the agenda that he's here to talk to us about. Anybody else know? Okay. Council comments, Mr. Carson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment about our meeting Saturday. I learned a lot, I think it went well, and I kept thinking about it when I went home, you know? Listening to all the department heads talk about what they were going through, the personnel, in short, and still giving us the same level of service as if they had a full staff. And I just want you to know that we really appreciate it, I do, I thank you for the work that you do. I know maybe we don't say it enough, and I hope at some point in time we can show our appreciation. But I really want to say thank you for the job that you're doing in the situations that you're in. Thank you.
I unfortunately missed the meeting Saturday, was a bit under the weather for reasons I'm still not sure. But I just, again, wanted to thank the police department, I already mentioned that, as far as addressing quickly the issue at Farmer's Market. And, you know, whether it was overstated or not, I don't know, but I've driven by it, looks better. And just to show those folks that we are trying, you know? I know it's hard because, you know, police take heat, I know that, but we appreciate it.
The meeting Saturday was great, a lot of information from the department heads, council people, everybody, tried to get everybody on the same path, thank Mr. Warner and thank devil for getting the food, the food was good. So, but, but everything was good Saturday, and it was a good meeting, and it's very informative, and that helps us to move forward this year.
Same here, I just thought it was a great meeting. There was some concern about not having an agenda, but I thought this type meeting was good in that everyone seemed to open up, everyone was relaxed, and just threw a lot of stuff out there that we needed to hear. And it was good, as I said, we heard the good, the bad, and the ugly, and that's what we need to hear sometime. And I made the comment, I don't like to hear everything sugarcoated, so we heard it. And I told Bart afterwards what a great staff he has, and y'all do a good job with what you have, and I appreciate it, and just keep up the good work. And we'll start digging deeper on those concerns and comments that y'all passed on to us.
Gee, I'm the last one up, and you've all taken everything I wanted to say. Just say ditto to this, because I think we all are in agreement that we have a wonderful staff. You know, we couldn't ask for better police officers. And the other departments, the elected department, and of course, DW's group, they all do a great job for us. And hopefully we'll show our appreciation by more than just talking about it, we'll do something about it.
Well, like I said, I thought Saturday was, it was definitely a different type of meeting. I wanted it to be a different type of meeting where we just kind of were open and honest and trying to figure out our challenges and our opportunities as we look down the road. And I appreciate the staff for just being open and willing to tell us what we needed to hear. And, you know, I think it's going to be a good start on us trying to figure out together, you know, how we move forward, how we solve some of these challenges and meet the opportunities. Because, you know, Bedford has got a lot of good potential, it's growing, and we're going to figure out together how to move this community forward and provide the same level of service to all our new citizens that we're going to welcome in fairly soon. And so looking forward to more of those discussions, because we do need to have more of those. And so I do appreciate everybody, everybody's participation Saturday. Next item, revisions, I'm sorry, report of council committees.
Finance committee met tonight to hopefully hear from Wiley Wilson, which didn't happen, but to discuss the progress of the new police station and adjustments that need to be made and as far as keeping costs contained. So we managed to do that amongst ourselves without Wiley Wilson tonight, we're looking forward to that. Maybe, I think, we decided to just have him come and address council in its entirety and, and a closed session on another matter.
That was only committee, I think, met since the last time. So next item, revisions of the agendas, I would like with everybody's consensus to add the item in regard to the resolution of naming the Burks Hill, the road, the bridge across Burks Hill Road, the Purple Heart Memorial Bridge. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, if adding that to the agenda, right, so we'll add that. Let's see here, we can add that, can we just add that at the beginning of new business or the end of old business? Because we have kind of talked about it, let's just add it, because Mr. Krantz is here, so let's just add it to the second item on old business. All right? So the first item in old business is the discussion on closing the streets, the Bedford Boys Tribute Center for the Reef Lane Ceremony, Mr. Warner?
Actually, Mr. Ken Parker, who submitted the request, is with us tonight, and I think he's prepared to share more information and discuss the event and probably tell some good things he's got planned.
All right, Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a very easy solution. I would like to amend my request for a free closure, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., to be revised to 5:45 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. My original intent, given the crowd we had last year, and the chief was quite busy directing traffic there, I originally planned to set up like a tent similar to what they had actually back in 1954 when the memorial was dedicated for direct descendants of the Bedford Boys only. Not practical, so that's the new revision that we request. Actually, our particular immediate event will begin at 6:15 and will culminate and end precisely after the bells are rung at 6:44, playing the taps, and then 15 minutes for the spectators and attendees to go back to their cars and so forth. I do request a waiver of the free closure fee with the permission of the council. Any questions that I can help you with?
Any questions? I mean, I think that Mr. Parker had addressed that, you know, our biggest concerns there was that traffic getting out of there on a weekday, so I appreciate your welcome and support on that.
Future years, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday night will be the same time slot. If you'll allow me just one more minute, please, Saturday upcoming here, February 11th, 11 o'clock, we are having a giant parade welcoming home our modern day Alpha Company, 116th Infantry Brigade Combat Team, which is our beloved Bedford Boys Company, 816th Regiment. As you know, we instituted an operation Bedford Remembers, the citizenry of this town stepped up unbelievably with letter writing care packages for the year they were deployed to the Horn of Africa. All returned safely, and now is our time to show our appreciation for their service. We're very honored to have three distinguished keynote speakers led by your mayor, Mayor Black, followed by a very stranger in town, April Chief Mezier, President of D-Day Memorial. And we are very humbled to have Major General John Rhodes, the commanding general of the entire 29th Infantry Division with us. That is, that's quite a thing, that's, that's big. Any questions on, on the parade? All the citizens who adopted a soldier while they were gone will all be invited back to the armory after the parade to meet the soldiers that they adopted and their families, and be treated to a nice barbecue luncheon. So I'd like to see everybody there, thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Can we, do we need to add it as an, I'm sorry, we probably, do we need to add this as the next item, too? Or go ahead and deal with it right now?
I think you can approve it now with a roll call, I'll make a motion.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the street closure with?
Street closure, if you want to do the, do we need to add that to do away with the fee? I make a motion that we approve the street closure and do away with the $100 fee.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
With the requested amendment on time.
With the changes.
Five, four, five, seven.
The way with the $100 fee, all right, that's the motion. And we have a second.
We have a second. All right, any other discussion?
It seemed to address it, I mean, that's what we were asking about, right? I think we waived the fee on the parade for February, but we, I don't know what we did on this one, but, I mean, everybody's asking us to waive the fee, so I can, it becomes why have the fee if we're just waiting for everybody, which I don't mind.
Well, like I said, like I said a minute ago, it did address the major concerns that we had with the, with the traffic flow after work, so I've got no qualms.
I just think anybody that comes up and asks, we're going to have to waive the fee for everybody, because we can't just pick and choose.
Right, and we probably maybe need to revisit that policy a little more, that's a different item, but we probably ought to revisit that some. All right, any other comments?
I think it's been, been addressed.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Carson? Mr. Haley? Mr. Hartwick? Mr. Johansson? Mr. Showin? Mr. Stanley? Mayor Black? Motion carries with seven ayes.
Next item is the item we added to the agenda for the resolution on the designating the Purple Heart Memorial Bridge on Burks Hill Road.
And I'll be happy to read that for your consideration. Whereas on July 26, 2022, town council responded favorably to a request from Mr. Clifton Buckkrantz to designate the bridge on Burks Hill Road, which passes over United States Highway 460, as Purple Heart Memorial Bridge. Whereas in consultation with the Virginia Department of Transportation, town staff have determined that this proposal is compliant with all applicable safety and design standards. And now therefore be it resolved that the town council of the town of Bedford, in accordance with the requirements of section 33.2-213 of the Code of Virginia, does hereby request that the Commonwealth Transportation Board name the bridge on Burks Hill Road over the U.S. 460 bypass as the Purple Heart Memorial Bridge. Be it further resolved that the town council of the town of Bedford agrees to pay the costs of producing, placing, and maintaining the signs necessary for this name.
All right, is there anybody that needed this? Mr. Krantz, did you have any comments or anything before we make a motion?
Just briefly, if you don't mind, I can say something. I really appreciate your time, because this is not for me. If you stop and think, how many Purple Heart Veterans names and plaques and stuff were up at D-Day, it's amazing. And just to think, if you look at all those plaques around there, that's just one of the jobs that the D-Day memorial has done. To come up with a list of all people killed on D-Day, not the rest of the war, that's an amazing job. So this is honoring all of them, a lot of foreign countries done, honor a Purple Heart, you know? But it's a thing of the past, but I do want to say I thank you for your time and patience and effort, is, you know, it has been a challenge. And I said I was not going to give up, I'm not a quitter, you know, kind of like being in service, I was trained to have a job to do, and I was going to do it. And also I noticed in the mention that says the town is willing to pay for the cost of the signs, did you say that?
Yes.
Well, that, that's, that's another burden, that's, I'm grateful for that, so I just want to say thank you to everybody involved. Thank you.
Look, we appreciate what you're doing.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do we know the cost?
No, I was going to ask the.
Like, do you know that before we go much further?
Approximately $500.
And then maintenance throughout the years, I mean, what do you clean up?
I don't want to use the term negligible, but we'll add it, add it to our list of other things we maintain.
So there'll be a sign at each end of, of, there'll be actually two signs correct, one on each end as you approach, actually approach the bridge, because it wasn't going to be on the bridge, is that correct? Okay.
That's why I didn't put it mounted to the bridge.
Once this is, I give an offer, an obligation, I have to, when you send it to Purple Heart National, they want to find a location, which we can make a note of that, if it's a key, whatever law, or particular of the net. But once that's done, it become part of the national Purple Heart Trail across the United States. So somebody goes online and says, hey, I'm traveling the Purple Heart Trail through Virginia, where are my stops?
Okay, that's all about. All right. Okay, any other questions? No, roll call.
Mr. Haley? Mr. Hartwick? Mr. Johansson? Mr. Showin? Mr. Stanley? Mr. Carson? Mayor Black? Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, next item, the, is new business personal property tax write-off of 2017 and earlier.
According to state code section 58.1-3940, collection of local personal property taxes is only enforceable for five years following December 31 of the year for which such taxes were assessed. Treasurer's office pursues multiple collection methods, including reporting accounts to the state debt set off program and by issuing holds to the Virginia DMV. There are individual amounts by year dating back to 2000 through 2017 with a cumulative total of $5,311.75. Tonight, town council has requested to approve the treasurer's office to have outstanding delinquent accounts from 2017 and earlier removed from the active record.
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's office to have outstanding delinquent accounts from 2017 and earlier removed from the active record.
Miss, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussions or questions? So this is something I think new that I've seen, so this, would we have potentially going forward a new list, like a list every year, obviously it won't be this amount, hopefully, but it's obviously, and we haven't done this in a while, and this is something you're cleaning up for us, is that correct?
Yeah, the state code requires us not to collect it, so having it on the books is just kind of formality, I'm leaving it there, because I can't actually collect it from someone during the state. I will say, if you want to know, our collectionary was 99, 24/7, which I.
It was just a housekeeping.
Yeah.
Yes, and every January typically is my procedure, I would take that to you, so next year would be 2018.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, we've got a motion, we have a second, so roll call.
Mr. Hartwick? Mr. Johansson? Mr. Showin? Mr. Stanley? Mr. Carson? Mr. Haley? Mayor Black? Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, next item on the agenda is the phase one of the pay plan implementation, Mr. Warner?
Town of Bedford, Bedford contracted with Stephanie Davis, affiliated with Virginia Tech, to provide a pay compensation study. Final report of the study was presented to the finance committee on October 25, 2022, and also I'll note that we discussed it as a personnel matter in closed session that evening with the entire council. As a part of the study, two separate phases were recommended to implement the new pay plan. Phase one would adjust all employees to the new minimum, phase two would bring employees to the pay scale based on the years and the position. Phase one is what we're asking you to consider tonight, phase two would be accomplished concurrent with the budget submission for fiscal year 2324. Copy of the new classification plan has been provided with that report. Tonight, town council has requested to approve the budget amendment, which will adopt the new classification schedule effective February 1, 2023, and to appropriate budget funding to the personnel expenditure line items for phase one of the implementation plan. And the overall cost of this is approximately $60,000 at this point.
All right, so do we have a motion to implement the recommended changes?
I move, we, we moved to phase one of the pay plan implication, implementation.
Second, you need to use a second.
Any, any questions, comments?
We went over this, it's detailed before, I think it was sort of accepted, right? I don't have anything to add.
My only question is, when would this take effect? I know we were talking about trying to do it the first of January, we're late January, I mean, this is, is this going, will it take effect from next pay period? Or is that when it would take effect, it wasn't going to be rolled back to the first of January, it's just taking effect once we pass?
That is the way we have presented.
Okay, all right, that's fine, I just wanted to, I think, I thought that's what this number was from, was going forward from here on out. Okay, for the rest of this fiscal year, all right. Any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Johansson? Mr. Showin? Mr. Stanley? Mr. Carson? Mr. Haley? Mr. Hartwick? Mayor Black? Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, we're all right along the next item. All right, um, we're along the next item, um, is the electric budget allocation of recoveries and rebates.
As of January seventeen, twenty-twenty-three, the revenue account for recoveries and rebates has exceeded the appropriate budget by fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. The Electric Department is requesting that this available funding be moved to the infrastructure improvement expenditure account, which is currently in a deficit, deficit position of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. A budget amendment will assist the adopted budget to match actual revenue and expenditures. Tonight, Town Council has requested to approve the below budget amendment, which will appropriate budget to the general ledger accounts as follows. Increases in revenue in the item identified as recovery and rebates, fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Transfer in electric, fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. And a corresponding increase in the expenditure line items entitled transfer to electric capital projects, fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. And infrastructure improvement and extension, fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
All right, so do we have a motion to make this budget, um, appropriation change?
Summit. Second.
Any questions? Real quick, so the, the budget, the revenues and recoveries were laid within the electric utility, or what?
Yeah.
They, they were?
Yes.
Kind of what was, drove that up, or do you know what that kind of consisted of? John?
This would consist of things like if we get insurance settlement.
Okay.
Or if, or if we recovered money for a line extension from a customer.
Okay.
Those type of things, so.
All right.
We do budget for some of that, but our, we're coming much higher than expected. But the problem is, we can't use it unless we, we allocate it back to that account.
And so we're moving it over to the budget for lining, kind of lining improvements and infrastructure improvements?
That's correct.
And the reason that was kind of negative, we talked, was basically because of that big transformer we had to buy at the first part of the fiscal year.
First week of this fiscal year, we had a huge expenditure for a transformer, which we didn't expect.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Mr. Shawin.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Carson.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick.
Aye.
Mr. Johansson.
Aye.
Mayor Black.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, um, next item is the, uh, DFP Tower Rescue Grant.
Town of Bedford has been awarded a grant from the Virginia Fire Services Board for the regional fire service training facilities of up to nineteen thousand, two hundred and three dollars. This is a fifty-fifty grant with the match being transferred from the fire department's operating budget and from volunteer time counted. This grant award allows the department to install towers on the current training facility grounds for rescue training opportunities for volunteers, not only in Bedford, but across the state. Town Council has requested to approve the below budget amendment, which will appropriate budget to the general ledger accounts listed. There is a revenue increase in the line item identified DFP Tower Rescue Grant of nineteen thousand, two hundred and three dollars. Expenditure increases in the line items entitled DFP Tower Rescue Grant expenditures of nineteen thousand, two hundred and three dollars. And DFP Tower Rescue Grant expenditure match of eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents. There is also a corresponding expenditure decrease in the line item entitled hose and equipment of eight thousand dollars, pagers of three hundred and thirty dollars, and a fire training center of ten thousand and five dollars and forty-five cents.
Summit.
Second.
Any questions, discussions? The, would you kind of just maybe tell us what this, um, this, this for and how it would be used and how it's gonna help your, y'all's training?
Um, the Department of Fire Programs has never offered a tower rescue program, for example, somebody that may have a medical event at the top of a cell phone tower, electrical tower, or some sort like that. So this program teaches you how to lean climb and rescue people within that particular area. Prince William County just built the same program, and it, they, uh, cost them two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build it. They had to erect the towers, buy those, labor, you know, things of that nature. We are very fortunate that the Roanoke Airport Authority donated our towers. Lynchburg Crane is donating, uh, the labor. We're donating a lot of labor through the firefighters, so we're able to do this project for about thirty-eight thousand dollars. There's only three of these in the state of Virginia, Virginia Beach, Prince William County, and that Bedford was chosen by the Department of Fire Programs to be that, uh, area. So anybody in central and southwest Virginia would come to our locality or our training center for that training, which I'm excited about. It's two courses a year, brings about eighty firefighters here from all over the state that will be staying in our hotels and, and, you know, buying from our restaurants and things of that nature. And it kind of gives me an opportunity for those volunteers to travel here, to recruit and, and, you know, maybe bring in some new people, so. I think it's just an all-around good program for us to have in our training center, and I was excited that we were chosen as, as that site.
Wow. So how tall were the towers being?
One tower is, uh, forty-four feet, one tower is forty-two feet, and one will be sixty-two feet.
Why are you volunteering to go up there?
If I volunteered, I'd have the big one, it wouldn't hurt. Sounds good, Todd, appreciate it.
Todd, out of your budget, was it eighteen, three, thirty-five? Is that what you've got of the town?
Yes, sir. Part of that, um, we have one line item that's hose and equipment, um, and, uh, we really didn't have any need for that. Usually every year we, we replace some, but this year we didn't. Uh, the, part of the pagers was left over, we already bought the pagers that we needed for this year, and the third one was already a li, a line item for the training center for maintenance. And then the volunteer department, um, voted to give ten thousand towards the project so that I wouldn't have to use that out of city or town funding.
I'm just always interested what the county's putting in, but I get it.
Yeah, the county has not put any into the tower program, but, um, the, the county just put forty thousand there into an extrication pad.
At the site?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so, um, they're, they're well invested in that, that site, and I was talking to the mayor, I, I would love for you all, maybe some time that you could come down and tour that, and, uh, it's a, it's a great site. The Bedford firefighters built that eighteen years ago, and we've built on it since then, and we've got a lot of blood and sweat and no tears, because firefighters don't cry. But we've got a lot of work in that, in that facility.
And that's down on Orange Street, or?
Uh, yes, sir, ten fifty Orange Street, which is part of the old, uh, landfill, and it's next door to the police, uh, shooting range.
Well, yeah, just let us know, give us a, hands up sometime.
I will tell you that we're doing a lot of burn there this Sunday, the twenty-ninth, from eight to three, that we're finishing, uh, the latest fire academy. If you're not doing anything, stop in there, you, you know, we'll be burning in our burned building and hopefully certifying fifteen new firefighters this Sunday.
It's not like open to the public, though, right?
No, not necessarily, but, uh, you all are welcome.
Let's try to, you're not volunteering.
We'll recruit a few of them.
Very impressed with this?
Yeah.
With what you're doing, getting these towers built, that's gonna put Bedford on the map even more, bring more people in. Anytime we can do that and keep the cost of tax appears that minimal, come on forward. Thank you for everything you're doing. You're doing excellent job as our fire chief, keep up the great work, and tell the firefighters that work with you to keep up the great work as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, like I said, I, I've learned a little bit here, the, you know, I didn't know that was, it, this extensive of a project and that, uh, we were actually saving this much money, so that's, that's just awesome. I appreciate, uh, how you've worked this project, Todd, and, uh, look forward to seeing that come fresh.
I do want to give the Chief Creasy, previous chief, a lot of credit, because he's the one that originally worked at the Roanoke Airport deal.
Okay.
So, uh, he has a big hand in this as well.
Good. Thank you. All right, uh, any other questions and concerns? All right, roll call.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Carson.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick.
Aye.
Mr. Johansson.
Aye.
Mr. Shawin.
Aye.
Mayor Black.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, uh, next one, uh, the DCJS Crisis Intervention Team funding.
The Town of Bedford has been notified that the Department of Criminal Justice Services, or DCJS, will be providing funding of one thousand dollars per officer that attends training for the Crisis Intervention Team. Funds from DCJS are restricted to police department expenditures only, but may be used for items such as equipment and training. Police Department plans to use these funds towards the remaining amount needed for a police ballistic shield and updated, updating expired trauma kits. Tonight, Town Council has requested to approve the below budget amendment, which will appropriate budget to the general ledger accounts, uh, as listed in the following manner. An increase in the revenue item entitled DCJS Crisis Intervention Team of four thousand dollars, and an increase in the expenditure item entitled DCJS Crisis Intervention Team expenditure of four thousand dollars.
All right, we have a motion to.
Second.
Any questions, discussion, anything you, chief, anything you need to say on this matter?
No, we have a tremendous, we have a tremendous partnership with Horizon, who is, uh, offering the program with CIT. They've really helped us with, uh, purchase shields and things like that that we really need, and without their dedication to training our officers and, uh, crisis intervention, we wouldn't have this ability, so there, Horizon has been great partners throughout the region, so I just want to, uh, put them, uh, out there that they're the ones that are really being discharged, so.
So far, getting the train, it sounds like a lot of your officers are doing.
Yeah, we're probably high eighties right now, and, uh, we've got two or three other classes later this year that they're putting on, so we're, we're even close to that hundred percent mark.
Does this fall into that, and I know it's tough with police and social services and what you guys end up having to do with, with mental health crises and stuff like that?
Yes, sir, pretty much, it teaches us to sort of try to slow down a little bit and recognize certain signs that person may be going through. And it also not only teaches us about citizens that be going, uh, could be going through it, but also the police officers themselves, helps you recognize, hey, something's going on, I may need to get help, so it's a great all-around program, not only for the safety of the officers, but it helps us recognize certain signs that, uh, citizens could be having in stress, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? No? Roll call.
Mr. Carson.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick.
Aye.
Mr. Johansson.
Aye.
Mr. Shawin.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mayor Black.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, uh, next item, uh, street maintenance funding, budget appropriations.
The funding provided by the state to the town for street and highway maintenance will exceed the current adopted budget by one hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and three dollars. Staff would like to request the additional revenue to be formally appropriated to the expenditure line item for paving under the VDOT account. Tonight, Town Council has requested to approve the below budget amendment, which will appropriate budget to the general ledger accounts listed below. An increase in the revenue line item entitled street and highway maintenance of a hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and three dollars, and an increase in the expenditure line item entitled blacktop of a hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and three dollars.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
All right, uh, any questions, discussion? The only question I had, and maybe DW can answer, um, so this is VDOT funding?
Yeah, it's extra, the county.
Is this gonna be, uh, ongoing? Is, is, that we'll be getting from VDOT this extra hundred and fifty, based on where we are right now, and that is, uh, so, so based on their funding formula, we were able to get an, an additional hundred and fifty thousand a year kind of going forward? Okay, is that, that's, that's good.
God bless your hearts.
We'll take it.
Yes.
All right, uh, that was the only thing, I just didn't know if it was gonna be a recurring revenue source.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
All right.
Uh, did, Mr. Haley, did you make the motion?
Mr. Haley made the motion, yes. And he made his second.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick.
Aye.
Mr. Johansson.
Aye.
Mr. Shawin.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Carson.
Aye.
Mayor Black.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, um, next item, the Bedford Auto Bus Project.
The town was awarded a demonstration grant from the Virginia Department of Rail and Transit, and Public Transportation back in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three to operate the Bedford Auto Bus for one year. The intent with the demonstration grant project was to apply for state fund assistance over three years, with the understanding that each year the amount from the state would decrease and the non-state match would increase if the grant was awarded. Fiscal year twenty-three grant award from the state has paid eighty percent of the cost of providing the public transit service. The Bedford Community Health Foundation has paid the match of twenty percent. To date, the match paid by the foundation is fifty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars, and this does not include the previous year's operations of the pilot, which began in September of twenty-twenty-one. Fiscal year twenty-three grant paid for service beginning in August twenty-twenty-two. Since that time, the auto bus provided over twenty-nine hundred trips to seventeen stop locations at no cost to riders and also at no cost to the town. The current fiscal year twenty-four grant request is to add another year of a demonstration grant whereby DRPT would pay seventy percent of the cost, and the Bedford Community Health Foundation would pay thirty percent. Foundation is willing to fund the continuation of the bus for phase two through the requested grant for fiscal year twenty-four and provide the required increased thirty percent local match of over fifty-five thousand dollars for the second year of the expanded service. The intent of the grant is to continue to provide public transit access and to develop a model for payment by riders that would cover a majority of the cost of operation. DRPT requires local governments be the applicant for transit projects, therefore the town is a pass-through for funding reimbursement from the state back to the foundation for money it's spent. DRPT also requires that local governments of communities served by the projects be aware of the projects if the local government is not actually providing the funding. Council provided a letter of support for the successful fiscal year twenty-three application last January, twenty-twenty-two. Tonight, Town Council has requested to provide a letter of support for the grant application for the Bedford Auto Bus Demonstration Grant Phase Two.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the letter of support.
Summit.
Second.
All right, any questions, discussion? Seems to be doing very well, I think it's getting a little bit better ridership from, uh, you know, I think the community, it's a great community service, uh, I mean, I think we keep moving on with it. I mean, I think we keep moving on with it.
It's doing well. I'd see a lot of people taking advantage of it and much needed in the community.
All right, any questions, feedback? No? Roll call.
Mr. Hartwick.
Aye.
Mr. Johansson.
Aye.
Mr. Showen.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Carson.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mayor Black.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, Mr. Logue, can we do these motions on the closed sessions all together? Should we go into one on that first item and then come out and then go in on the others?
Mr. Mayor, it's really at your pleasure which way you want to do it, whether we want to go into all of them at once and just excuse people or ask them in or out as appropriate or how you want to do it, Mr. Mayor. It's up to you and Council how to do it.
Okay, all right, so let's do the, let's make the motion going into all of them at one time. So the first one is a closed session pursuant to Section 2.237-1183 of the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended for the acquisition or disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the town related to a property in the Peak's Magisterial District outside town limits. The second one is a closed session pursuant to Section 2.237-11829 of the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended for discussion of the award of a public contract and the terms or scope of the contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body relating to the recent RFP for municipal financial advisor. And then the third is a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-371185 of the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended for discussion concerning a respective industry where no previous announcement has been made related to a potential business or industry in the western part of the town.
So move.
We have a motion from Mr. Taylor. Second from Mr. Carson. Roll call.
Mr. Johansson.
Aye.
Mr. Showen.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Carson.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick.
Aye.
Mayor Black.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
So the first item, I would say just bar...
That one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the council.
Seven, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Schoen.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Carson.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick.
Aye.
Mr. Jahanison.
Aye.